Next item is the first one to update. I guess just a couple of quick things. First of all, early voting has been ongoing. It started last week and it will continue till the Sunday. So if you've not had an opportunity to vote, the hours are posted on the website. But encourage everybody to that. You can also vote this Saturday and Sunday, I think. And then Monday, there's no early voting. And then Tuesday's election. So just want to encourage everybody to do that. It's actually right over here, early voting. But if you're voting on Election Day, you go to your normal polling place, either District One, which is at Paulson Middle School and District Two is at Brown Elementary School. So just want a reminder for that. Did want to just comment, I've had some people, you know, asking about the government shutdown and has it had an impact on the town, the town operations? Fortunately, not much in terms of our actual operations. You know, we do have some federal funding that we are tapping into, but right now, we're not currently trying to access those funds. So we have not had really any issues in terms of getting any funding. So it hasn't had an impact on our operations. We are concerned with the potential for SNAP to go away as or lose, or I guess not have funding starting November 1st. So we just encourage any member of the public that are reliant upon SNAP to reach out to either Madison Youth and Family Services. If you're under 65 or 65 and older, to reach out to the senior center. There are a lot of resources available. We'll be talking about a bit more of that later in this meeting about our Wheels on Wheel program and things like that. But just want to encourage anybody, if you are experiencing any difficulties. The other thing is it may, the shutdown may be impacting just anybody who is a federal employee not being paid. So I also encourage them to reach out to our Social Services Departments to see if there's any assistance that can be provided to help get you through this hump that we're going through right now. So just want to highlight that. And with that, I guess I open it up for any board member comments or liaison reports.
I'll just add, with the early voting, if there's anybody new to town and has not had a chance to update their registration status yet, there is same day voter registration along with the early voting.
Yes, I almost forgot that too. That's what used to be, you know, you could go Election Day registration, they would call it. Now it's same day registration when you're early voting. So that's very convenient for.
I voted in that little room over there and it was fantastic. There was nobody in line, so it was great. Yeah, I highly, highly suggest.
Yeah, and I will say that the, we've not really had any lines. You might have to wait like two or three people at the most. But we still had a very good turnout this past week. I think they're expecting as of today, like voters, people have voted already. So that's a nice number. That's a rough estimate.
That's plus A B though, right? So that's two ballots.
I'm not sure if that includes the A Bs or not. I just, the pace was going, I mean, they were, I was told it was, you know, the way the pace was going last week and then they were thinking they might have been 800. So that might include the A B. So if, bottom line is a lot of people are voting. Any other?
We're going to break 8%.
Yeah. I know, well, this is not year for us is the first time that we have a municipal election where the we're the star attractions usually, aren't we? Now, is that right? So they all come out to vote for us, no. But this year does have our Board of Finance, Board of Education, Board of Assessment Appeals, and zoning Board of Appeals. So important boards and offices on there. But I know it's just a little different dynamic not having the fourth select one on there for select one. Any other comments or updates?
Just late this afternoon, Governor Lamont announced that he was going to put money, state money into the SNAP program. I don't think it fully funded, but.
He's jumped something.
Yeah, yeah.
Hopefully those can be more assistance there, so. Any other comments? No, all right. Well, with that, I guess we'll move on to citizens' comments. So here in the room, anybody here to make public comments to the board? Nope. Do you need any hands raised online? There's an opportunity at the end of the meeting also to have a public comment.
No hands are raised.
Hands are raised. All right, well, with that, we'll move on to item number six. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, any further comments or questions? With that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is unanimously. Moving, and then what I would like to do now is I'd send a note out to the board is I'd like to make a motion to open up the agenda to add an item.
To the agenda?
No, to the regular agenda. So.
A move, we open the agenda?
Okay. That's the second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, okay, now I'd like to make a motion to add item number 12A. So it's just a discussion item to 12A that says discuss and take action to award a contract to MES for equipment in the amount of $67,343. And authorize the first law to sign all documents related to this award. Company is on the source of contract number 02012.
Moved.
Okay, all favor of adding that agenda item and we'll discuss it obviously when we do this.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. We've added that item. And now we will move on to item number seven. Discuss and take action to accept a recommendation from the Ad-Hoc Facilities Committee to award contracts to and authorize the first select one to send all documents relating to the following firms regarding RFPs for multi-site conceptual plan development. Two, A, Antonazi Associates, an amount up to $67,500 for conditions assessment and potential space planning for Jeffrey and Ryerson and for the feasibility study for the restoration of Memorial Town Hall. And B, TPA Design Group, an amount up to $65,000 for the evaluation of selected parcels of vacant underutilized townhome land.
Moved.
Okay, any, this is obviously the project that we've gone through and had up to $150,000 of planning reserve money approved by both boards. And we have the Chair of the Facilities Committee here, David Cadamas. And David kind of oversaw with Peter and process. We got responses back, did interviews. Very impressive, you know, different groups had weighed in on their thoughts and ideas and have approached this. And then the working group kind of just came up with a recommendation for this. So I don't know if you have any questions for David or Peter's here as well on this.
I'm going to lead with, with the ending. I'm a hard no on this vote. I was a hard no before. I think we've skipped over all the preliminary discussions and come right to conclusions and planning. So I feel, for lack of a better word, completely gaslighted on Ryerson. We advertised that Ryerson was going to be demolished, whether it was on the question or not for the referendum, to now take a completely different direction without any discussion at all. I can't, I can't support. I also, I also have a fundamental problem. Some of these questions that bring up are, I think are valid questions, but they're entirely within our wheelhouse with this board and with our staff to answer without the need for investing outside. I don't see the need for doing this. And I would further observe that when we look back at the charge of the committee, many of the early deliverables, I just haven't seen. We don't have an inventory of the facilities and how they're utilized. We don't have any sort of needs assessment of a town department that doesn't have space and needs more. We've skipped right to an auditorium idea for the memorial.
Right, I've got to correct you on this. They gave a, the Facilities Committee delivered a preliminary findings report to the board. We have extensive conversations and part of that conversation was to follow up with these steps. And that's where we developed this plan. Because the thought was there was a need to get moving, particularly on Jeffrey. I know your point is taken on Ryerson, but this is, this is a very small part of this. We all know it's likely to be demolished. So most, like, most of the focus of this analysis is going to be on Jeffrey, not on Ryerson. But we decided, let's have a structural expert look at it. Is there a way to like keep the main auditorium room for some purpose, you know? The way the building is set up, it's unusual. And the intention is most likely to demolish it. But I think we felt it was important to at least do that final due diligence step. And I can let David, if he wants to speak to that. But that's a very small part of the overall package that we're doing here. And we had the same conversation in our, when we voted on the planning, so.
And I think my comments are very similar to the comments at the time.
But it's unfortunate because we are moving forward with this. So you might disagree with the projects, but I hope you're going to participate in the discussion about what to do. Because these are relevant questions based on what our facility plan is going to be. So these are important issues.
I would love for us to have a conversation about that and what the needs are and what departments have needs.
But that's what this is going to, this is, that's what this is all going to be a part of. So David, I don't know if you want to add to this.
David Cadamas, Southern Chair of the Facility Screen. Yeah, over the last year and a half, we've had extensive discussions with many of the, of the town departments. And in particular, we've gone through all of the assessments as to the physical conditions of buildings and also have gained significant understanding of a lot of the space challenges. Biggest space challenge is Youth and Family Services. That's number one. Their adequate amount of space and they're spread out over several different buildings. We also know that the DPW Center has a significant amount of space challenges, including the grounds department that needs some sort of adjustment or a connection between those two organizations. We also know, and after meeting with the Board of, of the Chairman of the Board of Ed, of the Superintendent, we know that there's a significant, there's a series of, of needs in the school system, both for athletic programs as well as for office spaces, as well as for spaces here at the Board of Ed. So we have all those, they're all identified and listed in this, in this effort. We've shared that with these various firms in order to understand how you can put the puzzle together, if you will, in terms of, we have almost 30% of our space. Oh, I didn't, I didn't forget that the, we also have pulled all the needs that were identified for Academy. And so we have all those, some of which are, have higher value than others, but nonetheless, those were all needs that were identified. So we went down that whole list. There's a whole, another list of items that the first select woman has shared with us in terms of office space issues for, for town offices as well, so.
That was also identified in the DRA study. A lot of the Academy, you know, repurposing some of the municipal departments was driven by the DRA study, which was a conditions assessment that identified space issues. So that's why Youth and Family was determined, maybe you could go into Academy. So now that the Academy is only moving forward, those needs still remain. So this is just going to be looking at all this, evaluating the space and trying to come up with a plan. And then the, our board is going to be part of any decision that would be made with the buildings. I mean, we'd have to go through a whole approval process, obviously. But there's a lot of moving parts.
What's significant about these buildings is that when there's a change of use, it triggers a series of code issues, a series of structural issues, as well as a series of space issues that we all have to consider. We need to have a very strong understanding for Jeffrey, for example, of the portables and whether they can be saved or whether they can't be saved. That has a large implication in terms of the, the allocation of space. We have concerns on Memorial Town Hall and its structural integrity and whether it can be adjusted to deal with some of the things that came out of Academy that are missing, that, that won't go forward. So, so right now, we're in a fact finding effort. And that's what these proposals are doing, is to give us both sides the equation, facts on existing facilities and also facts on existing open space that we have in the town that could potentially repurpose for other functions, whether they be for town functions or whether they could be for residential functions or commercial functions. No decisions have been made on any of this stuff. We will be bringing all of this to you all in, in great detail. We have a very strong committee with your help and, and we're moving forward in a, in a very fastidious way. This process was very, very deliberate. We started on issuing the RFP on September 2nd. On September 9th, we had 11 firms walk the sites with us. They all, we, we broke it down to, the proposals were received at the end of September. And on October 17th, we had, I'm sorry, October 20th, we had five firms in here. We had a total of, just so you understand, which I think is an important statistic. We had a total of 14 separate proposals. So there was a lot of interest with a lot, a lot of firms on trying to do this work. Of those, seven were dealing with the Memorial Town Hall issue because of the historical nature as well. So it was interesting. There were four that were dealing with the issue of land and land use. And there were three that were for Jeff. The only other, couple other items, and there are some other new spaces, the dispatch, the centralized dispatch center. That's another issue that we're, we're looking at as an option. We know there are limitations on the arts bar and need some significant upgrades. And whether that should be in that space or whether it should be somewhere else is an interesting question. All of those things have to be looked at. So the, this effort is going to help us really define the factual elements of that, so we can bring to you information that is relevant, that you can make good decisions.
Can I ask a quick question? Is this going to be something that really just helps us to conceptualize what can be done where or what can be disposed of as opposed to really looking at dollar amounts of what it would cost to make alterations? Like, we'll say, for instance, Jeffrey.
Order of magnitude costs on these things and, and those order of magnitude costs may say they're feasible or not feasible. So this is really about feasibility.
Okay.
Will the Board of Ed, which is one of the things that they're interested in, move to, moving to the Jeffrey space, will it fit in there with Youth and Family Services? Are that, that's the kind of a core question. Or do we have to find different spaces for that? You know, and at what cost will those renovations be? So that's, that's, that's part of this, this analysis.
And back to your point on just the sort of puzzle pieces. So if in fact it's determined, we're not saying it is, but if National Family Services and Board of Ed moved to Jeffrey, as an example, and then Youth and Family Services, that building is left empty, would there be a recommendation on what to do with that building also?
Yes.
Yeah.
The idea is to have a master plan. That's why we set up the committee.
We had to use that word, so I didn't want to use the word.
But the, the goal is to have this broader master plan and you got to start putting factual parameters around certain uses and functions for different buildings. And then come up with scenarios of what are possible, right? And so this is, we tried to prioritize because we have the vacant buildings and there's a lot of attention in town about what we're going to do with vacant buildings. So the thought was, okay, let's start with this core group, but then it's going to spin off into other things, right? Other determinations about what to do with space. So I mean, this was all discussed. It was, the preliminary report talked about this. We had this conversation when we voted on the funding for it. And I think we just need to continue forward, go through this process and it'll be really helpful information to, to receive this back. I think one of the things that we never did with Academy is this. We never did a broader, and that was a big criticism. We never did a master plan. There was always a what if with Academy, right? Well, what if we did this instead or what if we did that instead? This is trying to get rid of the what ifs and say you can't do it because it doesn't work there.
Well, and I was on the original, I was on that original Facilities Committee where we just sort of looked at a couple of the buildings. We didn't look at land. We didn't look at all the different puzzle pieces. And I think that's really the important thing.
After the DRA report.
Correct.
Yeah, and that was originally supposed to grow into a bigger master plan. So we're kind of on that track. And, yeah, for, you know, look what we had going on, right? And so just time, it takes time. And, 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 you know, Mr. Cadamas is an expert in this area. He did this for universities and a lot of the space planning for campuses. So we're fortunate to have somebody with that background and training to be working on the committee for us.
Just make two, two extra other points. One of the things that came out of our conversations with the Board of Ed in particular and the school committee is that we need to reserve a site for future K6 area school, probably in the 2035, you know, 2030s, 2035 area. Ryerson looks to be the key area. So that's why we're looking at Ryerson as a way to use something as an interim type space to, as a space hole. Number two is that we talk about this as a big puzzle. Well, when we all think of puzzles, we think of fixed boundaries. Problem is you don't have fixed boundaries. You have, it's more like Legos. What we're trying to do is define what these building blocks are and then we're going to come together and see if we can put it, put it together in the best, the best organization possible. So there's not going to be a fixed solution here. It's going to be an interactive solution that says this makes sense to go here, this makes sense to go here. And then how do you try to put it together that makes the most economic sense as well as the most programmatic sense?
I would think we should certainly continue along on this course. To me, one of the essential roles of this Board of Selectmen is how to best deploy town assets. And it seems to me that rather than jumping to any single conclusion, we should explore all the options before we recommend anything to the public. I think we're on the right track.
And, and, and I think we've skipped to the end. I think that, you know, I was not in the meeting where the Facilities Committee came to us and said, we, we, the Board of Ed thinks maybe they want to move their offices there, that we want to find another home for Youth and Family Services. None of these needs have been brought up and discussed. I, I think that we would be a valuable filter to projects that we know are just not going to be on the table or at the very least would have to fall to the bottom of any list that was created.
Wouldn't we be involved in this process, Bruce? I mean, I totally understand your point, but I think, you know, we're going to have a liaison to this committee and to these, I can't imagine these organizations that we would hire wouldn't be coming back to us in an interim way and we would engage, re-steer, move, whatever. I think we're involved the entire time.
What is this committee going to do with evaluation on the restoration of Memorial Town Hall? To what end is this restoration going to happen? So if, if, or what, what, I realize it's not a given, but what is the likely output from the consultant on the restoration of Memorial Town Hall?
Well, there, there are two factors here, all right? Number one is that we've told all of these folks that we're on a fast trend. So therefore, we're looking for probably early January for recommendations on everybody. Sometimes some of these are going to happen in, in December. Certainly, probably the land is going to move late January, early February. So that, just so you understand the timeframe, we're moving very quickly. And, and we want to be able to communicate with you in an expeditious fashion because dragging feet on this long-term study is just kiss of death. It just wasn't worth it, very well. Number one. Number two, the core question, Memorial Town Hall was originally a congregating theater space. That's what it was originally built. The core question is if you can come back to that and bring kind of activities to the Tom Green that was designed for Academy that could really drive a lot of potential benefit. The core question is, is it feasible? If you take down the steel structure that's built inside to put in floors and those kinds of things, is the building stable enough and strong enough to accomplish that or not? That's something, that, that structural feasibility will happen probably within the first eight weeks of our work. And at that point in time, we're going to be at a decision point that says, can, do we go forward to a next step on what potentially happened there? Or do we pivot back and say, how do we reuse this space in its existing use?
Whose idea is it to even explore the possibility of turning it back into a theater? When did we decide that was a direction we wanted to explore? We didn't. This is my problem, is that we're going to pay consultants to, to explore the feasibility of converting the Memorial Town Hall into something that we don't even know we want. And we certainly don't know if the community has the appetite to fund it, although I can take a guess.
No, we, we've, we've, we have endorsed the idea of a master plan and that's looking at all the buildings in town and figuring out what are the feasible options.
Purpose and use.
And purpose and use. So this is part of that.
A potential purpose.
And, and Memorial Town Hall has been sitting dormant in the CIP for a long time. It needs investment in it. So before, for how, how we transition that, we need to know what the ultimate goal is going to be for the building. If it's going to stay where it is, and that's what this board would decide. We'd say, okay, we don't want to pursue this. Or we might, we have a list of needs and we have a list of buildings. We're trying to match those up and figure out which would actually be feasible to do. And that's what this helps us do. It gives us the feasibility and then we try to match things up. And if, if the board says we don't even want to pursue this, we don't, it would have to go through the capital plan. So this is just the early stages. There's no project per se yet, because we don't even know if it's an opportunity. So this is trying to match everything up, needs and facilities and what's feasible, and then come up with what we think could be a possible master plan. And then there'll be a lot of public engagement as well as board engagement as to what the ultimate master plan is going to be. So I, I mean, you know, it, it's kind of interesting because there was so much criticism that we didn't do this master planning process before and look at everything and have a place for everything to go in the past. We're actually doing that now. That's the goal. You can't just ignore one building and ignore the history of the building and just say, well, it has to stay as it is. We're looking at every building and seeing what the potential is, right? And that's what we should do. So if Memorial Town Hall, it turns out that this could be transformed into some space, but there's a need and the boards decide that we want to fund it to restore the building, then we look at probate. Well, maybe probate gets relocated somewhere else and Youth and Family. So you have, there's all these pieces that would impact the future of those departments, right? So I don't know, I'm just, we're trying to do the right thing. We're trying to do a long-term master plan and you have to go through this exercise to do it. It's not committing to any of these decisions. It's just researching, validating, determining feasibility.
But I wonder Peggy too, like, just even in the, maybe some of it is we're tripping over words here in how we've stated number seven A and B. Because I think we're, we're all sort of reacting to words, but maybe if we had just said we're doing a master plan using these firms, maybe that. I think we're tripping over some of the nuances already before we get into the study, before we get into master planning.
The problem though is these are like phase one, right? We start with these and we had wanted to prioritize vacant buildings, right? So this is kind of phase one. And then the, what comes out of phase one, then would lead to more, right? So all these are going to be building up to a master plan. I guess that's how I, I kind of see it.
Just remind me, because I can't remember, David, in the, in the preliminary presentation that you gave us, were those phases, like phase one, two, et cetera, listed out in there? What we wanted to prioritize for phase one, phase two, so on and so forth?
Yeah, in that, in that plan back in March.
I remember having a discussion about which ones we liked.
The state Memorial Town Hall.
Right, okay.
It adds a potential option in the event that the Academy didn't go through because there were two different smaller pieces that were there. And since the Academy is not, is not moving forward, there's, there's needs that were defined in that bill. I mean, and, and several of those needs were incorporated into all, all of this other work and whether you can find existing spaces to accommodate those needs. But yes, in that March plan, Memorial Town Hall was listed.
Yep.
All this, almost 300 acres of land.
Oh, no, I remember it was all listed. I was just, I couldn't remember if it was phased out, like in terms of priorities, what we were going to be looking at, phase one, two, so on and so forth. Because I remember the discussion surrounding the vacant land and these building parcels that we're talking about now, but I couldn't recall if it, if there was like a phase.
I came back there and we all back. Well, I think when we, when we asked for the appropriation of, of the planning reserve, do this work and then we laid out those steps at that stage. And then we went to the Board of Finance and we laid it out with them a week later and we all approved it, those four financial matters.
So it's my final comment is just to be precise, Scott, we're not voting on a master plan consultant tonight. We're, we're voting on a multi-site conceptual plan development project. It is not going to tell us how our current spaces are being utilized. It's not going to give us an inventory of our current spaces. It's not going to tell us what the needs are in town. It's going to tell us what we could do with building.
Is that.
We already have the 2021 DRA study, old set assessment.
The Facilities Committee you've all pointed is your, is your master planning. So that's the master planning group. I mean, the skill sets that we have on this committee are exceptional. The experience that we have on this committee is very good on both the construction side, the planning side and on, on the architectural side. Um, so we have a lot of skills and then we're utilizing Peter's skills and, and Aaron Mannix's skills and a lot of skills that are existing in the town. So I think we have the skills to do the master plan within the town. What we don't have is the skills to do some of the uh, feasibility assessments for whether it's structural or code or these variety of other things. Like that's out there and that's what this is filling in. For instance, is filling in the gaps that the committee doesn't have.
So let me be clear, I'm not disparaging the skills of the committee or the individuals on the committee at all. I am saying that there is a complete absence of oversight from this board on the direction that you guys are going in. And I only say that because the reporting back to us and the input opportunities we've had as a board have been really just the one vote to get to here.
I disagree with that. We had a whole interim report. We had a presentation, we had conversations. We raised a hat forward. We wrote the charge of the committee. The RFP states the goal is to do a long-term master plan in the RFP. So this is a step along the road. So, you know, I, I don't know, to be honest, I don't understand. The, I don't understand your issue, but clearly we're not here to sway you anymore, right? Because you already made your decision.
I expect, I expect to be on the losing side of this.
So I, I would argue maybe that we should just move, you know, move forward because we need to move, get, get our business done. Um, I think.
I would invite you to come to our committee on a Thursday of every month. I think it would be great to have you there and you're.
That's an awesome, that's an awesome idea.
Yeah. Um, and, and I think it's going to be, um, valuable work, just like the D R A study. That was the conditions assessment. That was what is our existing buildings? What are our space needs? That details them out, so.
I would just like to say though, because that happened, what'd you say, twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, so four years ago. Um, okay, so, but you know, we have a lot of folks who maybe weren't paying attention then, maybe weren't living in town then. I think it would be great if we could get all of that information compiled in one spot, not just for us, but for the greater public, because you know.
Was in our interim report in March. We did it all the D R A as well as the capital C I P programs, as well as everything from the school department.
And the full presentation is all online. The full presentation is on your board show.
Capital report.
The website, the town website.
I'll check it was there when we had the presentation. I think it might be, uh, I can't remember what's on the website.
I understand this.
And I think we're happy with any or all of.
Oh, no, yes.
Individual.
It's more of a public transparency. I know there's after the.
Let's make sure it's posted.
Situation, we just want to make sure that stuff is all posted.
First posted on, um, so this can be website as well as the presentation is posted there as well.
I'm just gonna go ahead and let's get the D R A in.
Sorry, we always post this, everything is always available. So I'm kind of asking, we have it all to be in one place so that by kind of so this can, yes. We will have, which we did have. We will add, make sure that continues to reside. Um, okay, so with that then, I guess, um, all in favor of approving item seven, say aye.
Aye.
And it, uh, all opposed, say nay.
Hey.
Yeah, okay. Item, uh, item number seven passes. So, um, we'll continue to, uh, update, you know, this and I, and, and I think we, um, will be able to put on future agendas, some updates along the, yeah, way in terms of those the RFP. Um, item number eight, uh, update from the senior center on the Meals on Wheels program. So I know we have Austin here. Um, and Austin, if you want to go ahead and just talk about, uh, cause I know this is one where uh, we had dedicated some ARPA funds, right? To, uh, and maybe just go ahead and give the history, a little bit of Meals on Wheels, how it's been funded.
So, take you back. Fifteen years ago, uh, Meals on Wheels was, um, came out of Haven through, um, a company in New Haven. They, they make the meals there super early in the morning. And then we were their last stop on the train to, to get the meals out to folks. So, you know, they make the meals at four AM in New Haven, package them up, make all their stops along the way they get to Madison around tennis. And then we would, our volunteer group, our drivers would then drive the meals out. Um, and then about nine years ago, eight years ago, we took over the operation of Meals on Wheels and the dining services, uh, at the senior center. Uh, we were able to use some of the Milton Marcus money, uh, that he generously left, sort of kickstart the program. Uh, the money that he left was earmarked for Meals on Wheels and energy assistance, uh, just for a little, a little background on that. Um, so for the past thirteen, fifteen years or so, we've been using that money uh, to pay for Meals on Wheels. So there was no fee for the recipient to pay the, uh, the mileage for the drivers, uh, who do the driving for us, as well as energy assistance for folks who qualify for various things in town. Were able to help them pay for, um, you know, after they exhaust all of their state and federal uh, energy assistance money, we're able to help them one time with, with the Marcus money. So now fast forward to today. Uh, we're coming to an end of that Marcus money after fifteen or so years. And, um, so we've made some changes along the way too. So like three years ago, um, we started sending out the recipients a letter every month saying you received twenty meals for the month of October. Those meals are seven dollars apiece. Uh, if you contribute what you can, your total bill is a hundred and forty dollars. Um, you can contribute what you can. So some, some do contribute, uh, some contribute their, their entire bill, uh, some can't contribute, uh, some give, you know, fifteen dollars, ten dollars. It really depends, um, but so we do approximately eleven thousand meals a year through Meals on Wheels. So a huge amount of meals, about sixty or so a day come out of the senior center. And the recipients, uh, after they get their letters every month, um, contribute about seventeen percent of the cost. So we're getting roughly thirteen thousand or so dollars a year from the recipients. Uh, we get a couple thousand dollars from this community donation. So, uh, somebody passed away, their son contributes five hundred bucks a year, every year. And on behalf of his, his mother, who was a recipient of Meals on Wheels and felt that it was a, a great thing uh, to help her stay in her home and get a welfare check every day. Um, but you know, we're, we're at the point now when we get into the budget discussions where we'll have to decide what the path forward is going to be. And we'll, we'll have those discussions as we get closer to that. Um, I don't think we'll, we'll ever get unless we, if we, if we go out and tell the recipients, you know, your hundred and forty dollars for your twenty meals is due and they can't pay it and then they come off the program. Or they just decide, you know, I can't afford it. Uh, they'll just, they'll back out and not get the food. And it's not just the food, it's the, the welfare or the, the wellness check that we do, which is equally as important as the, the food that we deliver. Um, so we'll have those discussions as we move forward in the budgeting process, what, what our, our path forward will be. But.
As soon as people just love having somebody at their front door offering a meal too, right?
Yeah, so they, we have, yeah, so we have almost a hundred, um, volunteer drivers that do, you know, first Monday, every single Thursday, every other Wednesday. Uh, and they form bonds with these people when they, when they get to their home, uh, and have, you know, a quick five-minute conversation. Uh, which is important because they might be the only person that they're seeing that, that day or that week. And, you know, we've had the occasion where the Wheels, Meals on Wheels driver knocks on the door. I'm here with your meal and say the recipient has a big black and blue on the side of their face. They'll ask the, hey, what happened? Well, how come you have a bruise? They'll say, I don't know, I fell. The driver will report that back to us at the senior center and then we'll follow up with that person. Um, you know, and offer guidance, the social services that we do for them. And, you know, we've, we've found people on the ground before. And if we didn't deliver these Meals on Wheels, like what would have happened? Cause they couldn't get to the phone, they didn't have a push button or a call bell. Um, their family's not in town, a variety of things. Um, so it's, it's an extremely valuable program. Um, one of the more fulfilling things that we do at the senior center, but it comes at a cost. And, uh, we can't pass that cost on to these recipients. Um, they contribute what they can, but we need to just figure out a way to, to make it work.
Give a sense just with those donations. The percentage of the program we're covering at this point, is it twenty percent? Is it?
So we're covering about, um, eighty percent of it. So between, between contributions from the recipients and the public in general, um, donation wise, we're able to take in about sixteen thousand dollars a year. And then the remaining was out of the, the Milton Marcus fund, which is why it was there, what, what the, the purpose of it was. But, um, that kind of leads me to the next item on the agenda.
Um, except we just have this, yeah. So, um, maybe we can talk a little bit more, cause one of the solutions that are, or a way to assist at least the situation is, um, setting up some sort of Madison foundation accounts and people funding, uh, donations, tax deductible donations. And I apologize, did you talk about though, how we did allocate some ARPA funds for this? Yeah, I was trying to remember though, was it set up over a series of years or did we just do one?
It was one time.
Yeah, okay. And so that's kind of been used up as well. I know food costs have gone up and we tend to historically, you know, there's a cheap way to do Meals on Wheel, right? But then there's also something where we try to do really, uh, uh, you know, hot nutritious, you know, high quality meals, which the senior center provides.
So prior to us taking over the, the program, we would have, you know, it's pretty widely known, we have four people in the dining room and twenty Meals on Wheels. And then once we as the town took over the, the food service, the numbers just went through the roof. Um, you know, we are an aging town, people are getting older, the need is there. But the, the quality, um, for Meals on Wheels particularly, um, is, you know, night and day between what it was with the delivery service and what we're able to offer. Uh, and just the, the thanks that we get every day from people. And not only the, the recipients, but the family members that don't have to worry. Um, you know, you have some picky eaters out there. And, you know, they may get, you know, Uber Eats delivered or somebody delivering meals every day to them. But it's not the quality that, that we're able to do and, you know, keep people, you know, it's important to, to eat and, and, and stay and have a nutritious meal at least once a day. And we're able to provide that.
Uh, so maybe just reading number nine, discuss the town of Madison entering into the agreement with Madison. Big foundation for the Meals on Wheels program. So we do have a draft agreement. We just didn't get a chance to really get it before we presented it to the board. So the idea is we bring it back at the next, you know, set up, um, that agreement so that they can start taking donations on behalf of.
So is this, i- is this the Madison Foundation taking over the administration of it? So, so it's still going to be a senior center function?
Correct.
This is just an, another fundraising.
Right, so.
Donation center.
Right, so you get Meals on Wheels, you're still going to get your suggested donation. You will give that money to the town, but anyone who wants to, from the public to donate towards it, the funds will go to the account in the Madison Foundation. And then we'll quarterly, monthly, whatever, ask them for the funds needed to keep the program afloat.
So this is, this is going to, so your regular process will continue with the letters and all that.
Correct.
But, but there's adding something into the K B.
So it, it adds, it adds it, it makes it so folks who do donate can now get a write-off. Right, because they're, uh, we are now the five oh one C three, so you can't get a, um, you know, a tax write-off. So people may be more willing to do that. Um, it's, it's an easier way to do it and, and beneficial to both parties to.
Yes, right.
And then when you donate it through Madison Foundation, if I remember correctly, you can either donate to their general fund or to a specific fund.
Correct.
Right, like neighbor to neighbor, or this would be, uh, Meals on Wheels. So you can direct where your donation goes.
We can put a link like on the senior center page or something so that.
Put a link, a Q R code. That goes directly to the Madison Foundation. Um, yeah.
So I, I would say two things. One, um, to anybody who hasn't done it, if you really want to, um, see that need exists in Madison, volunteer and do it. And yeah, the, the food is incredible. Um, and it has been incredible for a long time. But I think just as nourishing are those visits. Um, I, I haven't done this for many years now, but I've had houses I knew I was going to be there for fifteen minutes. I, I actually would do it so that he was my last visit because I wanted to get all the other meals there hot. And I knew he probably wasn't going to talk to anybody for days. And it was, I mean, there were some days it was close to forty-five minutes and it was just talking. Um, it, there were wellness checks, um, because you see something, um, you'll see a sign of Madison and truly appreciate the value of, of this, um, type of service that we offer in the community. And it's not necessarily people that are long-term. If somebody's elder, they, they break a leg, they break a hip, they're home alone, they're aging at home and they can't get out. And then for just a couple of weeks or a month, they're on this. And eventually they're probably the ones that are likely to pay up.
Correct.
Well, um, so it's, it's a variety of, of profiles of, of people and individuals that need this. Um, the other thing is, is this is, I mean, jumping ahead, but, um, this is a program we absolutely need to continue. And, and whatever the private fundraising can't do, I think we need to be at the other end of it, uh, from town, in the budget. So I realize that's jumping ahead, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, that, you know, this, we'll write back the actual agreement with, you know, get comments or whatever. And then we finalize that, we vote on it the next, uh, and I think also just promoting it as a great thing for people who want to do something, they want to donate for their neighbors, you know, this is an opportunity to do that. Um, and then we'll obviously be talking about it through the budget. This is what happens to see this. Uh, unfortunately, food costs have gone up a lot, you know, as we know that. So, um, you know, but we still want to have that quality meal thing delivered. It does, it is a benefit to, to the people who see this. So if we're good, moving on, uh, and then we'll come back and just, you know, formalize the agreement. Appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you.
It sounds like you have no issues getting, um, volunteers.
The drivers. Phenomenon.
But yeah.
Yeah, we, the.
It's been great though.
They, we have a great relationship with, with these people. Some, there's businesses in town that, I don't know if they require it or not, but there's folks that come on their lunch once a month. That's, they give them their hour to go and deliver Meals on Wheels. And, um, there's people that like, they're just solid, solid people in town that want to give back a little bit. You know, it takes, we have four routes. Takes like an hour. And you get, just the driver themselves can get, you know, a lot out of it, just seeing, you know, how their, their time is benefiting so many people in town that they may never have met before. Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Awesome. Great, well, thank you for that, Austin. Um, I'm just wondering.
Can we do Chiefs?
As I was gonna say, we got, uh, if, if Warren is okay, if we could bond item eleven real quick and twelve, and then we'll get, this will be a longer conversation.
He wants to see.
Yeah, you guys all good? Everybody good?
So we'll go to item number eleven, which is discuss and take action to approve bid waiver request from Nomad to expand its funds to refurbish their two thousand and four Pierce Fire Apparatus. Company is the sole source provider. Okay, um, so I will turn this over to you, Mike, to give, um, the background on this.
Yes.
How we're doing refurbishment. Um, versus purchasing new and.
Right. So a couple of years ago, we looked at the. Kind of the apparatus replacement cycle and due to the kind of unique nature of the rescue truck as opposed to the, the fire engine with the water and the tank. Uh, the rescue truck's in great condition. It does have dated from years, but in terms of. Wear and tear, low mileage and overall condition of the truck. It's in great condition due to the P M. So when we talked to the vendor. And started looking around about, do we purchase new, you know, even now, if we were to purchase it brand new. Just the, the bare bones, you know, just the fire truck itself. Probably be about one point three to one point two to one point three million. So that's before you put anything in it. Yeah. So it's good business to be in if you're in it. Yeah. So what we looked at was let's take what we have. It's in great condition. Let's refurbish it and update the mechanicals. And kind of change the, the box around a little bit. And then really what we needed to purchase was the actual. You know, the, the contents, the education equipment, which is also on that list. And let's, you know, let's use what we have and be smart about it and just refurbish the truck and. Get another fifteen to twenty years out of it. So that's what we're looking to do. Is with this sole source.
Hey, um, I have a question for Stacy. How would this impact C I P?
Um, this was budgeted in C I P, so it was already. The refurbishment.
Yeah, we're just using what we have.
Yeah. So we didn't have enough. If we were to buy it new, we'd have to have find another five hundred thousand dollars.
I mean, solicited three bids, but. To the other two vendors that are kind of the, the, the big three, so to speak in the, in the area didn't, they weren't interested in the work. So.
Yeah, they couldn't get a response or anything. So I think that, uh, let's see, item number eleven is, uh, bid waiver because we had to go and we wanted to respond it. But it's still obviously. I guess if everybody's good with that in number eleven, all in favor, say aye.
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 Great. And then item number twelve is discuss and take action to award a contract to New England Fire Equipment Apparatus Corporation for the refurbishment of the two thousand and four Pierce Fire Apparatus. The amount of four hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and one dollars and fifty-one cents. And authorize the first select one to sign all documents related to this award.
So moved.
Okay, and then. Wait, do I, no, I told you a second. Okay, so this is just basically the actual contract award now. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Right.
Aye.
Great. Motion passes. Okay, then, um, we had added agenda, agenda twelve A. Um, which has to do the equipment, discuss and take action to award a contract to M E S for equipment in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and fifty-two cents. And authorize him to first select one to sign all documents related to this award. Company is on Sourcewell contract, uh. Number zero two, zero, one, two, four. Second, okay, so this is basically the equipment award, but it's coming from, uh, uh, this, this like a consortium that. We've approved as a, uh, vendor, right? Sourcewell? So, uh, does it state? Sourcewell.
And they're a current vendor for us as, that M E S, that's who we use. For everything. They do all of our apparatus.
Yeah, and we've got a source, I know we've got a source of contracts before, so.
Yeah.
So all in favor, say aye. Okay, great. Thank you. So sorry, I. So, um, but you got what you need for that. So thank you. Yep.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work. Um, so now we'll go back to item number ten, which is the update from Western Sampson Waste Water Facilities Plan. So I welcome, uh, the chair of our facilities committee. Hanson is here. I know, uh, Trent, I think is online. And then we have our team from Western Sampson. Um, so basically this has been, we've had, I think, twice they've presented to us as they've gone along in terms of. The work that your committee has been doing on this. Um, and this is kind of the. I guess the final plan that you would be recommending to this board. Okay, so, um, and, um. Uh, you know, the idea here is then we would take the recommendation from you and then we would have our deliberations because I know that's. This is a hefty topic. It's complicated and it's going to involve a lot of the town. I don't think there's any preconceived outcome of this from the board standpoint. But I know you, you as a committee, having done all this are coming up with some kind of recommendations.
Right. And Matt and I and John Rovol are here from Western Sampson and they're going to give you the overall approach. So sit back, relax. But the important thing to recall is. Is that we call it Waste Water Facilities Plan because that's what the state prefers to it. It's basically a study that. Um, Water Pollution Control Association Authority is. Since we are responsible for making sure that the town meets its responsibilities for wastewater treatment. We, 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 we have a water pollution control plan in place. This would be another aspect to it that we would add. But it's a, it's a bit of a step because it's not. Business as usual. We wanted to do something a little different now to try to address septic system. We looked at. Report looked at sewer and many different things and frankly, Western Sampson's been very generous with their time because. We did go back to the state for some guidance and went back and forth to make sure that. You know, we were in line with, with state and D P H. Guidelines, if you will. But the report is basically going to. Allow us to get funding for projects that may come out of this down the road with regard to. Sewering or. Upgrading septic systems and that type of thing. It's a little. There's, there's a lot of stuff in it, but I'm going to turn that over to Matt and John to give you the presentation of that.
So, um. John didn't listen to me, so we're not gonna present session one and two consecutively before we got to session three today. We are last, so we could go.
So I understand though, because. One of these was put in the packet on Friday, but then my understanding is you guys were still kind of making some modifications to it. So is this the same one that we got Friday? Or has this been updated?
Uh, the presentation itself has been modified just slightly. Uh, I'm just moving around.
All the numbers came down?
So just like, just to make it flow a little bit better, uh, kind of present the numbers and everything as well as the information itself and, you know. Just a better format.
But this, but this is a summary, this is a summary of. Two and a half, three years of work.
Yeah.
So to, you know. We kind of kid about it, but, but a lot, a lot of the work has been. Has occurred over that time span. So the, the tweaking is, is really about. Wow, what's the best way to message and what order do we share the slides? So John, why don't you, why don't you take us through, um, kind of the recommendations from, from all that work that's.
Thank you. Um, so as noted, uh, my name is John Rovol, Western Sampson. Uh, we're here today, um, to present the updates, uh, and recommendations for Madison's Waste Water Stillness Planning. Uh, along with me are Matt and I, uh, one of our team leaders, uh, as well as Tom Hanson, the W P C A Chairman. Uh, online is Trent Joseph, uh, the Town Health Director. Um, tonight's presentation, uh, we will review, uh, exactly what the plan is and what it's trying to accomplish. Uh, challenges facing, uh, the town, uh, with regards to its wastewater treatment needs. A review of the recommended plan, uh, and then we'll put it up to some questions.
This being recorded and.
Yes, yes.
Jean can hear it, okay? Make sure.
Yeah.
And then let me, let me also chime in this up. Okay. Trent, okay, so I just saw that Trent's gonna be rejoining.
Uh, so to start, uh, let's view what the, uh, the update to the plan was necessary. Um, per Connecticut State statutes, uh, the town is responsible for the proper management of all the wastewater generated, uh, within its borders. Um, the town's W P C A takes on this task, uh, with assistance from other departments as required, including the Health Department. Um, Madison itself has no sewers or treatment plants for wastewater. Uh, so the current plan revolves, uh, solely around the use of individual onsite septic systems. Uh, new septic systems are permitted, uh, by the Health Department and meet. Requirements of the current public health code. Um, the town's last conference of study, uh, was completed all the way back in nineteen eighty-one. Um, so as you can imagine, some things have, uh, just updated a little bit. Things have come a long way. Uh, and with that in mind, the W P C A, um, decided that it was time to update that plan. And see what other management practices, uh, could be implemented, uh, to, uh, continue to improve water quality. Uh, to bring things up to speed, uh, this new plan will provide for a long-term planning tool. Uh, on a scale of twenty plus years, uh, that will identify not only the current needs of town. Uh, but also provide framework for all future considerations, uh, and or projects, uh, including funding for each. Uh, the study was funded in part by, um, the Connecticut. Uh, so that will ensure that any major projects that might come out of it, uh, will be eligible for state funding. Um, so what makes up? Um, the plan itself, uh, is a step-by-step approach, uh, that was taken to evaluate the existing physical conditions. Uh, performance of existing treatment systems, identifying the areas of concern. Uh, determining potential pollution problems, uh, and this all follows a prescribed format. So the D E P, uh, can be sure that all the alternatives that we looked at were properly investigated. Um, this also included the cost analysis of each alternative. So any recommendations that we make to you tonight. Um, be confident that they were also the most cost effective, I think. Uh, from here, uh, wastewater treatment alternatives such as central sewers, small community systems, uh, and so on were evaluated. Uh, with each one, um, or more recommended for the patient. Uh, this evaluation included potential funding as noted, uh, to help support that recommendation.
Can I just ask, just to put a fine point on, you just said, so there are options you guys may have come up with through this process that were not cost effective? And so it's not being presented.
So we will, we will touch upon some of those, so as kind of the presentation goes along. Just to kind of illustrate that, you know, some things were just. At the ballpark, you know, it weren't going to be, you know, feasible, uh, for Madison or otherwise.
Sure. Uh, so, uh, to understand, uh, how that recommended plan was formulated. Uh, we have to kind of look at, uh, how the town treats its wastewater. Um, as noted earlier, uh, use septic systems is solely relied upon throughout the town. Um, as to here, the general concept behind any conventional system, um, is having it serve. Uh, as a filter of sorts to process, uh, or renovate the wastewater before it reaches groundwater. Uh, a variety of factors, uh, can affect that renovation process such as the area groundwater. Uh, or the soil makeup itself. Uh, as you can imagine, a, a system that is underperforming. Or improperly designed, uh, could potentially lead, uh, to some groundwater contamination concerns. Uh, the W P C A's primary charge in all of this, uh, is protecting the quality of the groundwater. As Tom noted, uh, including area salt marshes and water bodies. Uh, with one of those key aspects being the accumulation of nitrogen. Uh, nitrogen is a growing, uh, kind of, of concern, uh, especially along shoreline areas such as Madison. Um, so that's something that we definitely, uh, kind of factored into this entire study as well.
So you, so you, I, I think it's important to understand over the four years since the last facility plan. Nitrogen has really come to the forefront with, um, Long Island Sound. And the state takes a very holistic approach of. Every community discharging how many pounds of nitrogen per year goes into Long Island Sound, whether you have. Um, public sewers with a sewage treatment plant with a pipe to a river, or if you have. Two thousand, three thousand septic systems. And it's, it's still pounds of nitrogen going into the water out to Long Island Sound. And in the last, the, the, the past. Can't, you know, I say forty years, but the past like fifteen, twenty years. They're saying. That's too much. We need to come back. Now that nitrogen goes in, so every, everybody has to do their little part. And then all those little pieces contribute to lobsters coming back for sale or.
Can I ask a question? And I mean, this may be that relevant, but. Nitrogen that gets released into the sound should septic systems versus public treatment. Is it the same? Poundage or, I mean, like if you did apples to apples like gallons.
If, um.
I don't even know if that's the right measure.
You have ten houses. I like my capital screen. If you have, if you have ten, and I'm saying you have ten apples, you have ten houses. And they each have a septic system that operates properly, or you have ten houses that connect to sewer. What comes out of the house before it goes in the apartment, it's the same. But the, so the.
I guess I'm asking more about the filtration.
So, so on a tree, so, so maybe if you have a wastewater treatment plant. It's, uh, it's a bunch of big tanks and they're, and they have really, actually they have slightly tighter requirements than. What you would have for, for an onsite septic system. And, um, and it's very, much, much more stringent. But for, for onsite septic systems, the idea is that instead of having one, one point source with. Thousand homes feeding into it and then two hundred feet downstream from that pipe, people are fishing. And so that situation or apple grove. And so that situation, what you have is all these little houses kind of scattered on half acre lots. And, and the, the chance of contact is much different because it's subsurface, it's under, underground. So the requirements are different, but, but there's still that same need, like. You need to remove so much percentage of nitrogen, I mean, from what's coming out of the house before it hits the groundwater. And that's what we looked at in this study.
Do you have any sense though, I know like with my lawn as an example, they're always telling me to put more nitrogen in the ground.
Makes it green.
Yeah, makes it green. And so I noticed that a bit about on septic system too. Got a really good green grass. Yeah, yeah. Uh, so how do you know, like? Is it, is it the homeowner putting down lime and is doing all those things to their lawn? Or is it the septic, septic system fault?
Well, that's, that's a great question and. This question the state's been risking because the state has already addressed. The end of pipe, like the New Haven Treatment Plan in Branford and. They're removing nitrogen as part of their process now. That was mandated years ago. That's what. So now the state is turning their eyes toward what we call the non-point sources, which is what this would be. And. It's very difficult to quantify it. To your point. You know, we could remove it from septic and still gotta throw forty pounds of nitrogen on your lawn every spring. Harder makes a difference.
Yeah.
So. This, from the, from W P C A's perspective, say, well. We can't really control what, we understand that problem. But we still want to do the best we can. Under the mandate that we have, which is wastewater disposal. Now, when the state did their study, they looked really at a couple of. Watersheds in Madison and. One is, uh. Tom's Creek, the other is Fens Creek. And it's kind of interesting. I was surprised to see this too. They said that as much as. Can't find the exact number now. I think they said the number was as high as thirty percent. Of the nitrogen non-point source nitrogen is from central systems. So that puts it in perspective. Nobody's really measuring pounds or parts per million or anything like that because it's just not. Feasible to backsource all of these things. But we did look at it and our recommendations are kind of. In line of understanding that issue. And. Perhaps, you know, making some progress over the long term.
So maybe you could assume that that nitrogen on the grass is a constant and all what you're trying to do is reduce the, the extra too.
Nitrogen's one part of it. We, we will, oh, Trent did raise his hands, maybe.
Hi, good evening. I just, I just wanted to answer the question possibly a little bit better about the nitrogen into the, into the sound. I mean, the, a septic system is traditionally going to work on. A natural process and so filtration where. A sewer system, it's trapped, it's conveyed all site, right? And. It's an engineered process and a mechanical biological system. So the water is going to break down differently. Force is charged or into the sound.
We'll get into a little more about some, some of the things about, um, the septic systems. I think in some of the, a little bit of the findings. We'll get into a little more about some some of the things about um the septic systems. I think in some of the little bit of the findings.
So uh so after evaluating uh some of those existing conditions uh as well as town records. Um some of the key findings that we noted uh include uh things such as uh physical features. Uh that limits limiting septic system performance uh on a level wise. Uh public health code requirements sometimes difficult to achieve um in some of the areas that we're looking at. Um in some cases, owners might find it difficult to make improvements, increase occupancy uh for winterizing the homes. Um from these findings uh and with input from both the WPCA and the town health director. Uh areas of concern uh were identified. In work with Trent uh in his department, it was clear that him and his team are doing a great job. Uh throughout the town, water pollution problems are extremely uncommon, uh but some challenges still remain. Uh the areas of concern uh that can be seen here um include those uh around Arbor Lane. Circle Beach, Garnet Park Road, Cottage Road and Dutch Village. Middle and East Worth Peaches, Neck Road and the Seaview Beach area. Uh based upon a confluence uh of those limiting factors uh that we kind of just touched upon. Uh and in-depth analysis was performed on Circle Beach, Neck Road and Garnet Park Road specifically. From that analysis, uh we revealed some additional information uh and some limiting factors that include. Uh small lot sizes that could make uh system repairs difficult. Uh shallow depth or inadequate uh separation between any restrictive uh layer such as groundwater. Some of the lots had obsolete cesspools. Uh in some cases, inability to meet uh public health code setback requirements. Uh after completing this evaluation, uh some treatment alternative alternatives were evaluated to gauge a best fit. Uh that would address both the current needs of the town uh as well as those uh in the future. Uh these in turn, these alternatives included both programmatic and constructive solutions uh such as a uh sewer. Uh system. Uh based upon that alternative valuation, uh it was determined that the best approach uh for the town of Madison. Would be to continue to rely upon those onsite individual septic systems. Uh in these areas, but to advocate for improved standards that go beyond uh the existing public health code. Uh this could be achieved through the implementation of a wastewater management district. Uh this approach uh provides for an actively monitored program. Uh to manage those areas that feature uh sometimes multiple or varied uh subsurface systems. Uh such as your conventional uh system, a small drainage system um. Which you could kind of envision as a very, very large. Um septic system with its own kind of collection system that's preserved multiple properties. Uh and advanced treatment unit, uh something that came to a miniature wastewater treatment plant uh onsite. Uh or a combination of everything. Uh the study also did investigate the potential for the sewer-ing of these areas. Uh found that based upon the nature and extent uh of those septic limitations. Uh it didn't justify a huge expense um that you could imagine would come along uh with such a structured solution. Uh Madison has no place to cite a large treatment plant. And the implementation of something like that would take many years to achieve. Uh additionally, large-scale sewer-ing would require a hundred percent of those properties to connect into. Uh into it, uh whereas the wastewater management district uh is very flexible and can take everything on a case-by-case basis.
Hey, hey, you have a question.
Yeah, sorry. I was, can you remind me, because I know we've seen some of this before. It's been a while, right? And then we also, he did have a public hearing and also. How did you determine the wastewater management districts, like where they were in town? Like what, was there a criteria where these areas then kind of hit that? You had to say, you know, you determined they were a district.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that is very much.
Yeah. Understand, so it wasn't like somebody said.
No.
Or you were here, here, you know, and this is a, if you could just highlight the approach and how you establish them.
Kind of going back and I don't have it. This presentation here, um it is available on the uh on the town website. Um in both WPCA's page and the town health department, I believe, um but we did assemble.
That might have been the first presentation we had.
Yeah, and that was probably.
Yeah.
Your twelve, eighteen months or so, it just to refresh, don't we have to go into depth?
No.
Yep, but we did put together uh what we called a septic system compatibility table. Uh where basically you kind of assigned rankings uh based upon all of those limiting factors that could potentially impact. Uh septic systems' performance. And kind of ranked each area, uh you know, kind of going through. Uh existing records from the town. Uh information available through the state, information available through uh the rest of the town's departments. Kind of assigned score to all of those areas and and some rose to the top, while others were, you know, maybe a little less indeed.
I think you have like, is your lot so small you can't fit? Uh larger septic, uh leaching field on it, or um is your 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 depth to groundwater only two feet down? Or are you, did you build your house on bedrock and there's just rock everywhere?
So a lot of these are kind of shoreline communities and I would guess there's some specific criteria that led to that.
Yeah, proximity to water.
There's there's a uh natural affinity for people living along the shoreline. So so you know, if you go back to slide, you can see that many of the lot sizes are very small. Um and the density is really high. And we didn't, we we really tried to focus on the uh the the tighter neighborhoods. And not just blanket coverage of entire shoreline. Uh the whole, the whole drive that the WPCA had was to to kind of narrow down. To to narrow down to um neighborhood areas where um there'd be most most benefit for this program.
And just to.
And how it's still back to the south, I would think.
Yes.
Yeah.
It quite, it it is somewhat subjective because we we know. What conditions septic systems can be made to work very well and we know what limiting factors there are. And so a lot of it was speaking with Trent in the health department. They know where the problem areas are to begin with. And then we we looked at the general soils, groundwater depth, etc. And we said, well, that would be this area here. We we would mark that out as an area of concern. Now, not to be misled, inside that area of concern, there are systems that were perfectly fine.
Right.
The lots are bigger, properties higher.
That's an important point too.
And.
Yeah.
And to just, you know, so we'll help, you know, what are we gonna do in these areas? We don't, we don't wanna run a sewer down the street where everybody has to connect. When one or two people would would really need it. I mean, ultimately, maybe people would like it, but nonetheless, it's a huge expense. And for a town like Madison, not in a position to really run a big utility like that, it becomes problematic for us. So we 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 kind of positioned the uh the consultant to give us. Their best idea of where these problem areas are, how many we have there and what we can do. On a lower level, but not such a big structural solution, but more administrative solution.
And getting back to technology of the four years, there's still, there's still houses out there that have cesspools. Or where your, the wastewater from your house. Comes out of pipe and it just goes into a pit in the ground. It's covered, but goes in the pit, goes in the groundwater. There's, so maybe you're moving solids, but there's no, there's no bacteria treating anything. The 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 next step up is actually uh like septic tank and then from the septic tank. Um just very marginally better, those are the drywall, but still. If you hit water, it's even better because now it goes into the water now, but but that you're still not getting bacteria to travel. So the idea is to bring um is to say, well, what would it take to make sure? With, you know, we have some baseline of everybody has like a septic tank with a leaching field. That's above groundwater, so so there's bumps in the soil that breaks things down, breaks down the nitrogen. It's the baseline and and um. If there, there are all sorts of exotic treatment technologies out there and. We want to try to avoid that because it becomes prohibitive and it's like another thing that you have to fix occasionally. So so with that, trying to balance what's. What the minimum ground floor is without without costing everybody a mortgage payment, that that was the challenge I had this time.
And that is a good segue uh into this.
Too. There's so much there to go.
Yep.
Uh because once established, uh updated updated standards uh for onsite treatment uh within the uh districts. Uh could apply uh including. Removing uh those outdated cesspools. Recommending or forcing a revised uh and increased groundwater separation distance. Uh between leaching fields and groundwater. Uh septic system upgrades. Uh as well as implementing uh code triggers such as the B one hundred A uh and all of its criteria. Uh it's like an example would be uh addition to a house, attic and bedroom. Uh such an upgrade was undertaken, uh the system would need to uh be upgraded to kind of meet that. But it gets the uh districts to team.
Are your proposed districts, the the areas, are they all served by city water?
That was actually one of our uh major findings is that um. Almost every household uh has water uh access.
So it's not, we're not really worried about uh.
Right.
One neighbor contaminating the water supply for an adjoining neighbor or or neighborhood.
Yeah, one of the first things we found is that almost every household had access, you know, to uh to the public water, which is actually, you know. So that was green on your compatibility table. Nothing else.
And that makes this this approach work better because otherwise you need a seventy-five foot radius from your drinking water wall to the nearest. Septic system, whether it's yours or your neighbor's, and if you have a tight lot. And you put your wall in your front yard and your septic in the back, like then what's your neighbor gonna do? Flip flop it like it's. That's a very hard problem. Somehow some lots might only be seventy-five feet wide.
Well, a lot of these difficult systems were probably put in before there was public water. So they were put in a way that worked on the lot. But you know, when the, when the.
They were also seasonal.
In the pub, yeah, right, they were also, they were also three months.
Or you're just summer houses, yeah.
They have more room to make upgrades now. You're right, seasonal access was always seasonal. Residence.
But also you identified a lot of them floods, right, in the flood line. So you do have a other hazard that is rising. Sea levels and greater risk for flood, which can cause. I would think you get cesspools that are flooded, uh that now you have bigger environmental issues with that, so.
Those are happy bells. Those are happy bells. But but I mean, Peggy brings an interesting point up. Should we be thinking about this the same way? We think about those code triggers for elevating a house. Uh that, you know, the the system, so long as it isn't a health violation or a health threat. Can more or less exist until something changes that then triggers a need to upgrade it. Is that, is that the way we should be thinking about this?
But is the need a simple flood?
Well, no, I'm saying that there's like, so with the with um the flood plane, there's that base elevation plus one, right? You got, you know, fifty percent, you know, improvement to the house, you've got to raise it up. The idea is there's, there's a problem, there's a solution and there's a trigger to act the solution.
Right, that's that's one part of it and and we'll. I would still miss thunder if I shared that now, but but that that's one part of the, like a kind of a couple, couple, couple thoughts we had and want to package. Together as a wastewater management district kind of forward. So. Yes.
Don't shake the exciting.
Yeah, well.
There's different options to implement.
Yeah.
Options timeline responsibilities, both town versus resident, you know, all that stuff. I think that's where what we're gonna do soon.
Yes, yes.
Debating all that, looking at what's feasible and.
But can I ask a naive question?
We will answer your question.
Yeah, I'll throw out another naive question because I don't understand a lot of the stuff, but. But. Why wouldn't we, regardless of flood plain? Where these houses clearly are on the water, but why wouldn't, I mean, Madison itself is, you know, mostly septic system, right? So why wouldn't we just say unilaterally? Why don't we unilaterally just say, you know, what are they called cesspools?
Oh.
At all?
And how do you? So I'll answer your question with the question, how do you?
District or no district?
How do you know there's cesspools?
Well, Peggy, doesn't our health, our health team probably knows that because don't you have to like get a permit or a?
There's, there's some like uh the rec, so we went through the, we went through available records in the past. And um the records that we had available is probably about fifty percent of. Where each neighborhood area is about about fifty percent of information available with records, just just based on going back. Entire, the entire history. Um so we are jumping into it a little bit. We are looking to take a proactive approaches. And then, and then go take a neighborhood area and go through each of that. Lot by lot and and then, do you want, if you want to describe this a little bit?
Yeah, you don't have to raise your hand, you could just interject too.
I don't want to interrupt, and I'm sorry about that before. Good evening. I I think I was just getting really anxious with uh just a conversation. But uh some really, really great questions um and and I'll I'll address yours first, Scott, is a. No, but that's, that's, that's the framework here. It's um, you know, it's, it's. Somewhat commitment to sustainability, right? Um and that. Environmental stewardship that you kind of want to have as a shoreline community, that that's what this plan. Is about in a nutshell. I mean, you know, I'm a public health background, so I'm gonna be an advocate of anything proactive, right? So why would we react to failures of maybe cesspools or drywells when we can kind of implement something? That's framed around prevention and we're making that commitment, right, to just environmental health readiness. Um that's, that's one thing. And then we talk, we're talking about water quality. Good question, Bruce, on uh if it, if it were public water versus private wells. And you know, there's, and Peggy brought up a good, a good point. There's different types of water quality, right? There's, there's drinking water quality, but then there's bathing water quality and then there's our shellfish beds. So the 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 last two are the things that are going to be impacted by septic systems once we bring up that big word climate change. And then sea level rise, right? So those are the things that, that we would like, that this plan somewhat address. And um you didn't get to the slot yet, John. I I think you are maybe waiting to, but. Um it just compares different type of septic systems. I mean, ideally, this would be a s- step-by-step process. Identifying, we've already identified the areas, but then how do we continue to identify that once, say, one area of concern? We do have documentation in the, in in the health department, but we don't have everything. And I think a lot of this plan is gonna involve uh some inspection requirement. If you are within a district, um so we really know what you have and we really know how it's performing and the integrity of the system. That way we can make more sound decisions on what's required, right? So that's, that's what I wanted to say.
I I I love, love what you said about being proactive. I mean, I think that's an opportunity where we can, as leaders, really be stepping up here and and. Showing that our environment is important. So I I it's a great point. Thank you.
And the health code already does not allow cesspools, any new construction.
Okay.
I mean, no cesspools. So these would all be older systems.
Right, but that's like, how do you?
So let's try our best. We're, we're, I guess we're teetering between these two slides here between the kind of the advantages and then the implementation and like cesspools certainly. How are there still cesspools from seventy years later, right? But they, somehow they sneak through, so um. John, why don't you present this one?
Yeah, so like, and piggybacking on that, in regarding kind of implementation, um the management district approach is. Faster and more proactive in that it leverages Trent and his department and his staff who are very well versed. In all the existing systems, you know, and as we have noted, you know, where some, you know, problem trials might exist. You know, things that, in areas that they, you know, he'd like to tackle. Um. The program itself also is flexible in allowing him to do that on a case-by-case basis. Isn't just a blanket, okay, here's an area concern, you know, kind of. Tom had also alluded to where this is either you're a hundred percent involved or you're not. It's like, we can go down that road, you have ten septic systems, no issues, find that one. And then the next seven, fine, we can just address that one while all the other homeowners, you know, basically affected. You know, but the inventory is also updated along the way as well, so that gives Trent, his team and everybody. Future even more tools, you know, things that they can use as the program kind of grows and gets its steam. Um a really big move as well is that this will. A really big move as well is that this approach is already also been considered by the WPCA past. All the way to the point where they actually have draft language available and prepared and previously discussed. So it's already kind of giving the town a leg up, getting everything paired for formal adoption within time.
What is an A T U?
It's an advanced treatment unit. So you can kind of almost picture it as a, you know, grand scale wastewater treatment. Plant kind of miniaturized, so it could fit in your conventional footprint for me, a little bit smaller. Like, yeah, fit it would still be on site.
On, on a very limited basis. So one of the steps. See, Trent's ready to go. One of the steps that was skipped over is. The, the idea would be, we, we have all those neighborhood areas and. You start with one neighborhood area and you very methodically. Go through all the properties, you do. This, this becomes where the town would bring in resources instead of expensive engineers. And then do, do like, hey, let's make sure, let's make sure you don't have the cesspool. Oh, we don't have anything on file here for your house. Let's. Let's actually create a file and just write, write down what's there. And then, oh, everything's, everything looks great. Your depth of groundwater looks good based on a test that we did or we TV. From your cleanout in your basement, all the way up to your line, looks great, or another, another situation. You do have a cesspool. Let's think about, let's, let's have a discussion, figure out how we, how we can remove that and, and modernize it. It increases the value of your house when you go to sell it. That's, that's sort of part of the implementation plan and that, that's something you can't, can't just sit at a desk. And just look at old records. That's, you need to go out there and do that. It's. It's too hard to say, let's do the entire shoreline area five years. Because you would, you just go crazy. But if you could pick one neighborhood area, go through that area. And then as you're working through that area, improvements start to happen, then you get through, then you can start to the next one. Suddenly, it becomes a twenty year program just to do that. But then at the end of that twenty year program. Those failed septic systems or malfunctioning ones that are not removing contaminants that are going into the ground. You're fixing those and then you get those incremental movements over time. That's what we're looking for. We're not, not looking to.
Try to move the needle.
Yeah, move in the needle, just a little bit each year.
But even in that, even in those districts that you guys have specified, is there an inventory already of who has a cesspool? Does it?
As best as we can, yes, we give it a report.
Yeah, we've made an inventory from all the existing data, but there's still holes in that thing. You know, you think about houses built.
Yeah.
Right. Even pump out records is the, it's a voluntary program when you pump out a septic system and you submit it. Strongly encouraged, but. Is it, is, is that record complete? Maybe not.
So the, the. The pump out services themselves don't have to report back on the houses they've serviced?
That's the state or something?
It's kind of an administrative burden.
We, we have a report. A, a reporting, I mean, not really a policy, but it's a, a system. The pumpers do, they report their, their pump outs. Sometimes they send. You know, a list that they have done over the past two to three months and we put them in on the property file. Again, you know, that pumper that you hire. You know, they're just gonna have basic information, you know, the, the date and the capacity that they pumped out. From their site to when their truck.
But I would think, no, no disrespect, right, to the, the pumpers, but some are probably better at disclosing than others, I would think.
Correct, right. It's not a perfect system.
So getting into the fun part, the recommendation of the wastewater management district approach. Also took into consideration all the associated costs, costs that might come along with it. As seen here and compared to some of the other alternatives that we looked at. The districts do present the most cost effective approach for the town residents. This summary table kind of shows a general estimated cost for some of the related systems that were evaluated as part of the study. So you can kind of see up top, you have a residential system, your A T U, moving on to your small community systems. Centralized sewer systems. You kind of see that small community system, the centralized sewer systems definitely come with very hefty price tags. And that's just for construction, not even engineering costs that would be associated with those together. And then kind of as we had noted before, if you were in, to implement a structural solution such as that. You would also be asking everyone in that area concerned to connect to it. So it's kind of a hundred percent or not.
How often do you see the small community systems installed in new construction developments? Versus retrofitted into existing development?
It's a growing trend to, to have a small community system for new construction. But that's also because the developers are trying to put three hundred houses on. Postage stamp sized lot, so they're, they're trying to like use every little bit they can do. Also, the land that's generally available development hours are the difficult sites. It's, I mean, gone are the days where someone buys a farm and subdivides it into one acre lots and everybody gets a one acre lot. I just don't see the, now it's, now it's, uh. Let's do cluster development with a little bit of open space, which is actually where they're putting leaching fields.
Right.
With the, with the central.
Yeah, it's forced to do.
Yeah, that's kind of what's been happening. So, so to, to then retrofit a community with a small community system, it's, it's certainly possible. But now you're. Going back to, going back to Tom's example, if you had ten houses on the lot, on, on a street and two of a problem. You're gonna ask all ten to connect. You're not just gonna ask the two. You're gonna have eight people here, well, you're gonna have all ten people here against it. So we're trying to, we're trying to avoid that and it, it really does put control back in the homeowner's court so they can say. You know, I, I have, I, I recognize I have a small issue of my, my property and I can solve it myself, but I'm not. I don't have to pay for anybody else's issue or my, my, my property works great, so. So I feel good about like, I'm a steward of the environment.
Right, but is there a legality conversation here too, wherein like the cesspools, I keep going back to that, but are they legal at this point?
Not really.
They're antiquated. They, they don't have any respect in the code. So, I mean, in terms of a credit. If you have a cesspool and you wanted to expand. Your house to footprint, if you want to add a bedroom, if you want to put an accessory structure on your property, there's some limitations to that if you don't have. What's considered a code complying septic system. So cesspools are considered antiquated. They're not recognized and I, and I use the term respected, they're not recognizing the code anymore. So you, you wouldn't get any credit for that. You could only keep your house as is. You can keep it a three bedroom. If it's a three bedroom, you can knock a wall down, put a wall up, but it just, it would have to stay a three bedroom. If you did some interior renovations and then new construction to, to that comment. A lot of, there's feasibility testing in new construction now. So the, the feasibility testing, the soil testing is going to determine. What you can put on the property. I mean, you, you're not going to be able to, just because you have a lot, a certain size, the soil. Is going to dictate what type and size of system you can put on the property. And that soil is very important. You don't, I mean, obviously you want sand and gravel, but you don't want soil that's gonna. Percolate very quickly like you're gonna see along, along the unsound.
And so get the plan of the case in because we have a very large number, twenty four million dollars. Now, community systems don't cost twenty four million dollars, right? Depends, is that for, to do all the wastewater water management districts, what the cost would be or? Like, what I, I guess I'm thinking like, I know we were gonna have to put a community system in that, that group, right?
Yeah, if we didn't divide.
That was like.
Okay.
Almost a million, five hundred or a million. It wasn't twenty four million, so.
Yeah.
That's.
You really have to look at the report. The twenty four million was a, a. Their estimate of a system, a community system that would have leaching fields under Lowry Field. And sewer all of the neck road area.
Yeah, okay, so that was one of the districts.
It's a representative example.
We also did another one on the eastern part of town, which was sixteen million, but there were much fewer homes. So the homeowner cost goes up. So. Can't really compare these three.
Yeah.
Numbers to one another because this, the number of service properties would be different.
Sure.
Obviously, the community system, I think there was over four hundred in that community system that redesigned.
Yeah, and that's why the cost was.
Right, right.
Whereas, and I think it's important to highlight, we do have community systems. We have one at the high school. There's one at the views, right?
Yeah, those are actually treatment plants, right?
And one in Stop and Shop, right? So they are there, they do exist, but they are very expensive.
Like Stop and Shop is really, these A T U systems, advanced treatment units.
Okay.
At a commercial level. So you would take that and actually shrink it down to residential size. Even the school campus has, has an A T U.
That's an A T U.
But it's, but again, it's, it's, it's larger than Stop and Shop because it's serving a population of hundreds of students. And, and the cost of that, again, it varies, varies on how many, how many households would all connect into it. What, what type of soil you discharge into it and then kind of a little bit of the effort of, of cleaning that up before you put it into the ground. Because when you have a large volume concentrated wastewater, you don't just rely on the, the bacteria in the soil to treat it anymore. You actually. You know, bubble layer through it and have different tanks and stuff. So when we, we try to put this together, we're trying to, we're trying to summarize the summary table in the report. But, but when you look at the cost per household, if they were to do a community system, it's, it's much, much higher than just. Fixing your septic, conventional septic system. And again, not everyone would have to fix their conventional septic system.
So I'm, I'm back to the flood analogy. We're not, what, what we're not doing tonight is debating the relative science behind nitrogen and nitrogen pollution, right?
Right.
We're, 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 just like we're not debating rising sea levels, right? So with that example, again. The big wave is coming. We're not gonna argue that, okay? The best defense to that big wave is to get your house up twelve, the base flood elevation plus one or whatever the state requires. And then we have triggering events. So you can roll the dice and live in your house in the floodplain and hope that the big wave doesn't come. But the second you hit a trigger, which in our cases is the, the. Improvements, the value of the improvements, you have to come into compliance with that code. Why wouldn't we just do the same thing here? We have a water quality standard that has to be met. We're not gonna make everybody need it today, but we're gonna set up triggering events. And if you trigger one of those, you have to bring the lot into compliance with that standard. Why?
Well, you're right. And have you been listening in on us during?
Remember, it used to be liaison.
That's right. Well, ultimately, what's gonna happen is it's gonna have to be an ordinance, a written document prescribing. How you determine, the, the first document will describe where the management districts are. And then it will also describe what are the minimum requirements that you would have to meet. Which may be over, might be just the same as a public health code, but or over and above additional requirements. So those kind of triggering mechanisms will be specified in there and John's gonna talk about some of the ones we're thinking about. And it would be in the form of an official ordinance requirement for an area and that's. That's where the wastewater management district becomes an entity of itself. Fully approved by D E E P because they're encouraging this. And, and then we could get funding also for the projects within that management district. So it really has to start with a norm considered, written, prescribed.
So, so for, for like, for areas prone to flooding. You would, you would make, you would want to include in, in the ordinances that would say you, you should meet these requirements that. Maybe perhaps during flooding, the system doesn't have to function, but when floodwater is received, the system has to immediately come back online. That's a lot different than a system that floods out and it doesn't work like six months where you're trying to find a contractor, like the rest of your neighborhood. Another example would be sea level rise. It's, it's still, it's still a little bit of a controversial topic. But the way you hedge your, you, you, you don't just go out there and say, okay, I, I did my groundwater testing during high tide and we went up. Eighteen inches, which is health code, and that's about my septic system, like. We can impose more stringent limits, like twenty four inches. So then, so then that sea level rise. When and if it happens, you know, that, that six inch buffer brings you out fifteen, twenty years for, for that particular leach.
Well, that's the logic behind the base flood plus one.
Yes.
Right, it's, it's. So, so, yeah, so.
The question I have though, is there a? Will we complete this? Right? If it's filed, the state, the state has already reviewed it, correct?
Informal comments.
Part of this is, is the state going to require us to address? Those properties that have cesspools, right? Is there a triggering event where the state is gonna?
From the state, right?
Right, versus like us waiting for an event to happen where the, the property gets sold or whatever it triggers through an ordinance. Is there a, you have to?
State D E E P does not regulate individual systems, that's.
D D P H them. But, but I thought D E P because. The environmental impact, particularly because we're dealing with the flood, right? That there was going to be. An effort to perhaps require some sort of action. Like what, like, what are the old Sabre books? Why are they in a position where they're under a forced wastewater management district, I guess? What triggered that? Like, why do they have to, they have like a whole. They have a person on staff that had some, in, in, implemented a wastewater management district in one neighborhood. What triggered that? Did they have like a disaster happen? That caused that or?
Or were they being proactive?
I don't know if they were necessarily. I, I, I remember it a little differently. And my memory is a little, little hazy after these years, but, but, but basically the state came in and was. Was, was basically looking at like, there's a, there's a community. Groundwater pollution problem because the, the, you have a lot of low lying areas and there's, there's inadequate depth. Separation for your cesspools and your, your leaching fields to groundwater.
So maybe they were on well water or they weren't.
Actually, there are quite a few well.
Yeah, maybe that was more of a triggering event then.
So then, so then that, that went into like, well, why don't we just neighborhood, why don't we just sewer Old Sabre? You know, cause prohibitive. And that was voted down by the town. This is probably cause prohibited. So, so then it's, then it was like. Then the next step was, well, if, if we're not, we still have to address these problems. If you're not gonna do centralized sewer plant, then let's. Let's go back and let's, let's go lot by lot and create, create like bid packages of. Upgrading your onsite wastewater, you know, your, your septic system and, and they, they did that for.
But they were forced, they were forced to do it?
More, yeah. Because, because if, if you're creating a groundwater pollution, that's the W P C A has statutory authority to. Have you address.
So there was a, there was an issue, a, a pollution issue, which we don't have right now. We're trying to get ahead of possible pollution issue in the future, right?
Yeah, we, it's a different type of issue here because it could, sure you have some flood prone low lying areas, but. Quite a bit of the shoreline is fairly elevated and a lot of it is on sand. So it's, it's. Has more to do with just smaller lot sizes or, or just older aging systems, much more than. Old Sabre were, you know, you get an eight foot hurricane swell and then you, you know, you lose third of the community. Till, until it receives, it's, it's. In Madison, it's, it's only like a couple of little forks that actually are perking inundation zones, which we have a mess for that too. So, so it is a little different. So we, we will look at this as. Just trying to be proactive to try to, try to get everyone to that baseline twenty twenty five standard. That's really the goal of this and that incremental progress is creates a notable impactful impact and then, and then if there are. Do drive along the shoreline, you do see these like, these households kind of nestled in. Between, between, you know, the road and Long Island Sound and, and you're thinking like, well, maybe they could put. Between between, you know, the road and Long Island Sound and and you're thinking like, well, maybe they could put it uh um. Like a like a bottomless sand filter, they could raise it up and pump up and and out. And then but then the question is, would the state fund something like that? If can you can you guarantee that system is going to last for the next twenty, forty years through hurricanes? Sometimes the answer is yes, sometimes it might be no. So they'll be able to handle this on a case-by-case basis. There's a lot more power to that than to try to just have like a blanket regulation. It's much more compassionate, I think.
Have a one one comment, and then we can probably move on with with the slides too, John. Um, I I think it's also a way for. Madison to um position itself, right? Because it's it's not a matter of. If it's it's going to be when, right? We we know, like Bruce said, we're not going to argue the science behind what's happening with the environment. Um, DEP, no, they don't in, they don't enforce uh single-family uh private property. But they're going to find a way to work with through DPH, right? And they're going to work together. And they're going to create regulations that's going to come regardless, right? We've seen some draft regulations that were proposed this year that got pushed to next year. It's just a matter of when. It's it's not if, and I think, again, Madison could position itself with that environmental stewardship look like we're we're being proactive. And um, and that's that's what we're doing here. And I and I think if we continue with the slides, John, a lot of the things of the triggers. Are going to be explained um briefly of what would what would trigger this this upgrade if you were in a district? And then um I think there are some immediate triggers like. An existing cesspool after that's determined you have a cesspool, I think there should possibly be a timeline to when you need to get that fixed. And then the other timeline is if you trigger a renovation, renovation, an expansion of your footprint somehow. And your system is deemed inadequate or um in poor repair, you you would have to upgrade it. And then I'm not going to go without saying, we've talked a lot about health staff, John, and what it means. But I mean, my staff is somewhat lean. Obviously, Old Sabre has a person, we would need some additional staff, and that's also in there. That would help with with this uh implementation, but that's all I had.
Um, so kind of how do we help kind of accomplish the implementation of the wastewater management district as well as current. Current residents to repair, upgrade their systems. Um, and in doing so, kind of vibing by those uh kind of updated B one hundred A requirements. Um, would be to help provide funding um to get those upgrades done. Um, this funding would be set aside annually, uh making it a part of the town budget. Um, that amount would be estimated um by the uh wastewater management district administrators. Uh, based upon their anticipated uh grant requests. And this program, of course, especially this part, would rely on the expertise of Trent and his team.
So can I ask why you would suggest the town funds this this improvement to private property? Um, we don't do that. If if my septic system fails for some reason, uh there's no town fund ever going to be available for me to to do that.
Wish there was.
Pardon?
I said, I wish there was.
Right, so uh and and just not to beat this floodplain thing, but but when a homeowner triggers an elevation to their house. Uh, there isn't a fund that is funded by the rest of the taxpayers that helps them raise their house. It is, it is a cost of owning a house in that location, which, I mean, we're talking about the most expensive real estate in the town.
Well, that that's a great question. We've we've turned that every which way in our discussions. The WPCA's concern is that it be done in one form or another. We have decided as a WPCA, but really lawmaking body. That the best way to get compliance with upgrading, especially if it's going to require them to do it. Is to also provide an incentive where funding would be perhaps not for a hundred percent of the system, but for the for a cost differential. If we ask them to go to a more restrictive system, then the additional cost for that could be funded. It would also be matched by the state. So we want to keep funding on the table because we think it's the only realistic way. To start to get compliance with what WPCA wants to see happen. And we're, we we could say that all day long. We could say we should pay a hundred percent, but. We're we're convinced that hun- that funding is going to be critical for this program.
But you're not suggesting a hundred percent anyways. You're saying some incentive funding.
Yeah, here's actually a little, you, a little, little example of what he's talking.
Yeah, so like an example that we have here, um will be based upon uh that approved apparent cost estimate. Um, the funding level itself would be set by the town and then, of course, based upon the amount of money available in the fund itself. Uh, in the hypothetical scenario shown here, um you estimate twenty systems per year and an average cost of twenty thousand per system. If the town's um anticipated grant fund level was set at twenty-five percent of that total cost. Then the resulting uh fund level would be set at a hundred thousand dollars uh for that year. Again, hypothetical situation, um you know, this is where you kind of would lean on Trent and his staff, you know, kind of what they're seeing um in the field with maybe less. Maybe it's a little more, um kind of as you kind of work your way through those areas of concern.
Are these common ways of doing things, too, to do these sort of incentive programs? Are you seeing this? Every community is very different. Old Sabre took a very different approach where they. They basically, they didn't, they did the first part where they did analysis of the whole neighborhood area. Then they they packaged it up. They hired um a consultant to go in and to design lot. Well, first they were going to have a consult design lot by lot, but then they changed it into, uh, here's the data we have for these six systems that have a contractor. Most cost-effective, but but then each homeowner would be like, okay, lot number one, your price, your total construction, all in construction price was. Forty-five thousand dollars and um DEP would contribute like, say, thirty-five percent to that. Um. But but they're they're doing hundreds of systems a year. We're trying to take a much like a light approach and just do something. A much smaller scale that that we can manage in town with Trent, maybe one more staff member. Um. So so the grant construction funding would be a hundred thousand or twenty-five percent, but then we're not like. It's becomes a Madison program. It's this this type of a program might not work up in. Like, trying to do like uh Brooklyn, Connecticut or something, something.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, but I I just was wondering, is it a best practice, I guess? Is this something that other towns are doing versus this is custom? This is, this is really custom.
It is.
So, yeah, I was going to say, though, so Old Sabre, the talent of Sabre is not spending town bu- money in the town budget to help pay systems instead.
They are, they have money for the sewer, for like, for like, kind of like a sewer administrator role.
For the for the administrative roles in terms of an employee, but they're not helping to pay for actual systems in residents.
No, they were, they were still trying to break it out lot by lot.
Right.
But to get, the state only gives money to the municipality. They don't give a direct to homeowners. And with all the. Administrative burden that comes with state grant, if you want to package it into a larger contract. So that's, that's.
So the town could be a pass-through for state funds that might be available.
Yes.
So this would be our capital plan. We wouldn't put in a fund to then write checks to the homeowners to pay for the system. But we'd be like a pass-through for other sources of.
So we would, what we would try, we like say we. To be determined, um the contribution was twenty-five percent, we would see what kind of funding we get from the state, which changes every year, every two years. And then and then I think the, I think DEP approval is is the what starts the conduit for that funding.
It's a discussion a little bit, yeah.
Well, the other concern is that, you know, the EPA funding, so, right? So that was something that was a big.
Yeah.
Source of money, but that's now on with the change funding at several levels. So that is a loss of funding sources.
Can I ask another hypothetical? Um, if the town were to do something like this, where money from the budget went into a special fund. Could we do something like what we do with, is it trees where the homeowner gets the benefit? But then upon sale of the property, they have to pay back into the system?
See, okay, we need the rules, we can, yeah, we can, we can do whatever, but I think maybe not getting too wrapped up around the the money side of it. Since I started that conversation.
Yeah, wait a minute. A lot of, there's a, there's a lot of different.
Yeah.
Options and possibilities. So so to try to lay, just to put a floor and say, well, twenty-five percent. A thousand a year, okay, well, do we, do we uh wait for the sale of home to recoup it with two percent interest? Or do we um, do we do a different, instead of a twenty-five percent check, do you do um? Do some sort of tax mill adjustment for that property until they recoup that twenty-five percent? Like, there's, there's all these like different, so many permutations that are distracting from the message of of let's find a way to sort of.
Do it.
Do it, yeah.
Yeah, well, and I think this is just straight one way.
Right, definitely.
But it, but it sounds like the committee is saying we should look for ways to assist the homeowner. We shouldn't just say.
Yeah, assist it in in scent.
Yeah.
Because you're going to see, when we talk about triggers, um if we make a trigger change in ownership, somebody's going to have to pay, either the owner or the buyer.
Hmm.
Um, which is kind of along the lines of other things that you do.
Market price is the market price, I mean.
And uh, and and that's um, that's something we'd like to see included in the ordinance. You know, how is that going to actually work?
Um, so as the program starts to kind of get off the ground, um it is feasible, um since the town has um. Some resources at at its disposal and can utilize uh both its existing uh and future health department personnel. Um, to help administer the program um and continue uh its growth. Uh, relying on Trent and his team, um they would accept, given the proof, and then provide oversight uh for all of those um. Repairs, upgrades, uh as well as the funding itself. Um, funding for additional uh department staff uh would be provided. Secondly, uh this could be provided. Or accomplished in a variety of different ways, um fees, assessments, uh subject system pumpouts. Uh. Probably some of the district's. Um, here is just a very uh, so again, summary of summary um table showing the estimated initial and annual costs. Um, related to establishing shame uh the districts uh for the town itself. Um, staffing, funding and administration of both the program and the systems uh was included.
Well, the thirty, three hundred thousand includes a hundred thousand grant money.
So, exactly. So kind of tethered that a little bit uh as we've been discussing.
State?
So that would be grant money from the town to the property. So, in other words.
Twenty-five percent of that.
Yeah.
So that little example we showed, said a hundred thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be part of the.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, so.
And of course, you would have control of it, you know, year to year, how much, I mean, the district will tell you how much you want, but then. Obviously, the budgeting process will tell you how much you get.
And I I think we've talked about before, do you just start out by?
Of course.
Waste water management, right? You start out.
Pilot test almost.
Yeah, and you see how that goes and that process and the cost burden is a lot lower. And that process before you try to rule it out over a lot of.
The flip side of that argument is that you do homeowners feeling you're singling them out, too, not enough.
Well, actually, based on data, right? There's certain areas that have a higher risk profile than others.
They're not going to be able to say, no, my lot really isn't a quarter of an acre, uh, you know, thirty feet from the beach.
Yeah.
And it's.
Yeah.
Well, that's the whole discussion itself. Do you start, we we have a lot of, we have several neighborhood areas. Do you start with an easy one and work your way towards a harder side? So so you, you you get up, you you get the program up on a solid footing with relatively straightforward communities with one of the repairs or or. I don't want to say slave, nothing's ever a slave dog, but and then you work towards the the more difficult neighborhoods where where maybe the um. The the probability that you have a higher number of issue, the probability of a higher number of of systems that have to be upgraded in some way. Makes it just slows the process down. That's a different, we'd probably rather try to pick. You know, I I really like Peggy's idea of the um. That's Alex. But I like your idea of having like that pilot area to get the program up and running. And um before there's um commitment to all the areas simultaneously, which. Which then then it just be, it's hard to focus on any anything in particular at that ministry.
But and I think the other thing is really, I think you phase what we're doing because until we actually have each property assessed. What the problem is, we don't really know how many are really going to need, you know, significant repairs, right? It could be that we turn out, there, some of the properties are better shaped than we thought, right? So then the cost level, then, so I think it's almost like, and and I just was kind of thinking about this today. You know, you have, the first step is just doing that assessment, like every property has to have some work done over a period of time so that we assess. What the restrictions are, because just because you have a cesspool, that doesn't mean you can fit leaching fields on your property, right? So some houses, we can't even have a a conventional system because there's so uh, there's so few space on the property, right? So their cost is going to go way up, because now they're going to have to do some sophisticated, you know, whatever it's called, ETU, right? So that's very different than somebody else that has adequate space and can easily do just a kind of conventional system, so.
Or or and we we also, we always forget to say, or property, we do, you have the assessment done and they're fine.
Yeah.
Do anything.
And then those people are just, they know they're good and it doesn't impact selling their property. It doesn't have any really uh. Impact, so it's also.
Do do homeowners though that have a cesspool or non-compliant systems, are they likely aware that they're non-compliant? Or are they just, you know? Yes and no. If it's, if it's a um, let's say it's a family home that.
Could pass down.
It's been passed down this and.
Generational transfer at this point.
And there there's only, there's only like one or two people left in that house, like. But they flush the toilet, you know, twice a day to save mo- money on water consumption and it's. That's going to be very different than someday if they were to sell a family, a family of four and with young kids.
An Airbnb.
Yeah, but they do, it's a tank, it's a it's holding stuff, right? So they're just getting a pump more frequently. So, you know, a pump out is what, three hundred dollars nowadays, maybe with all the fees and stuff versus spending.
But if they're getting, they're getting told they have a cesspool, they're not, they're not getting told they have a normal septic system.
Right, right. Well, you you still have people today who buy a house and they're just, oh, I'm booked up for this, I'm up to the sewer system, this is great. And then it doesn't work and you get a call at town hall like, hey, my sewer backed up. Like, what are you talking about? We don't have sewers.
I know, that's a fellow accountant that has never had a septic before.
That's crazy.
So I I sort of skipped ahead to the next steps because we're kind of hung up on the money part. Oh, yeah, so do I, do I read this right? The state approves it before the town approves it?
The the state approves it before you would enact it. So um, we're we're basically looking for your.
Endorsement.
Endorsement of the final, the final plan, which which gets formally submitted to the state for their for their acceptance and approval. And then.
So we'll check in at the end, though. That's what I'm confused because we have to have, you know, fuller implementation plans yet, right? So that's what we need to decide, do we, will the state? Look at your report, your recommendations, or they're going to wait for the board selection to have the actual, like, this is the ordinance for passing, this is how we're going to implement.
I would say they're gonna, they buy into the framework and the concept and then the actual, the ordinance and the what you're, the very specific detailed implementation plan. That's that's something that that has to get developed by committee. That that's not, that would be. But do you agree with this framework?
Yeah, the state will review the report and say, yeah, this this meets our direction.
Correct, yeah.
For for a nice plan for the town, we're going to approve. Now the town has to go and enact it. And then they can get money from the state and we're in the grand pool and things like.
So the the final conclusion of this, the state would be fine with the the thing saying. You know, we're going to implement wastewater management districts and these are the districts that we've identified.
Right.
And then and then those.
And then and then the next phase is you don't have to have that approved now.
But we don't have to tell the state we're doing an incentive plan, as an example. No, they they would, I think, I think they would want to check in and say, you know, a couple of years from now, like, so so how are your next steps going? You're you're uh, you agreed to these next steps. Where are you in that process? So they will ask that and then I'm sure you you would, WPCA is certainly going to ask the state for some, some. I don't want to say guidance, but but say like, hey, we're we're not getting into any trouble. You submit other communities by suggestion. I don't want to say guidance, but, but say like, hey, we're, we're not getting into any trouble. You've seen other communities by suggestion. X, Y, and Z. And I think, oh, that, that seems pretty reasonable. And, or they might say, they might say the opposite, like, well. Why are you funding, um, twenty five percent system replacement, uh, on that house, which isn't gonna be there in ten years?
Right.
So, 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 and then, then you're like, oh, well, we'll just have to think that through and, and then. And that, thanks for the suggestion or the helpful bit.
Could the state also ask us for in a year or two, an implementation plan? I mean, I, I guess that's, yeah, this, this is sort of like the, the high level plan, right?
Yeah.
You wanna see implementation.
They want to see progress.
Yeah.
Yeah, to mess with their engagement in the fines.
But I guess what, what have you seen based on other people that have done this step that is required by the state? What's the next step they're asking for?
The next, the next step is to basically carry out, carry out the recommendations that everyone agrees to. So, um, we were very. Sensitive to, to creating a Madison plan. That, that would be well received by the committee, that, that also be something that's palatable with that. You know what? I think we, we can do this. We, we can take these small incremental steps and make a difference. As opposed to saying. These neighborhood areas, let's, let's, let's look at all, all twelve areas near one.
Yeah.
And then that's just.
Twenty four billion, here we go.
You know, you get, you get a price to do that and then that fizzles out before you even start, right? That, that's, that's not what we want.
So.
This is a bracing moment. I'm thinking about our predecessor boards. Having kicked this issue down the road for what, forty years?
It's, it's, we're really gonna have to exert leadership here, be actually communicators as to why this is necessary. Because I think most homeowners initially are gonna feel that, uh, why are you bothering me with this stuff? Um, so I think it's an important moment that we all recognize the big task ahead of us. And the importance of communicating why this needs to be done.
Well, that's on Trent, isn't it?
Yeah.
Sorry, buddy.
Well, I think that the, uh, action item at one point for us is to accept. Right?
Right.
Um, and so then we. That's not tonight. So, and plus, I think we all want to look at the form for, which we'd seen it a year ago, but it's an awful lot. Uh, and I think the important thing is that we want to make sure that there's no like weight on a final solution, right? You know, there might be your committee recommendations, but I feel like we need to make sure that. It's about options that are gonna be explored, right? And, um, and, uh, so that when we. Start that process, the public doesn't think. Oh, this is gonna happen, you know, that, that they're gonna be involved in us developing solutions. Um, so I think, uh, so we'll look.
Bruce is the liaison, right? So he's got to read the hundred eighty.
This train has been coming down the tracks for ten years anyway. And, 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 and Tom is gonna be sad when he can't be the guy in the driver's seat anymore.
Um, so I think then, um, I mean, I know this has been a heavy lift, uh, Tom, for you and your committee. So we're very grateful for all the hard work that you've done. I know it's been a long process. Um, I think the next step is then to. You've kind of, you're done with the reports, as far as your committee, like you formally recommending it to us. I think the next meeting would be when we go through the report and we might want to, you know, um. You know, accept it. But I, I think we want to read it first and make sure that we're, you know, good with some of the concept that's kind of.
Maybe highlighting any risks, you know, concerns.
Yeah, so the next thing would be to get some feedback to make some amendments to the report and then we could accept it for.
I, I, I guess one other favor I would ask is, maybe, do you guys or not, but. We can hear maybe what the, the state feedback was, the initial feedback. Um, just so that we have a sense of kind of where their eyeballs are going.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is a memo, right?
Well, well.
Informal set of comments, we can, I think by email.
Even if it's just, I'll send, send us some bullet points, it'd be great.
I mean, and then the, I was just thinking through the other option, is if there's a concern about, I don't know if the state is expecting. W P C A report or maybe we have a.
Town of Madison report.
Well, just a rider on it or more selectmen memo addressing things that we want to do with it. And where we might have some concerns, right? So that at least we can work off of that versus, I don't know if like. Can we make changes to the document still? Or are we kind of like? I know you guys are on a funding for doing any more work on the study, but.
Depends what changes.
Yeah.
I can't, everything, if it's, if it's, um, sorry. It depends, but if, if it's like, well, the, the way you say this is kind of inflammatory to a certain demographic. You, sorry, I, I really didn't think that way. If it's, we don't like this concept and, and come up with something different, that's a different. Type of.
All right, well, we'll, we'll think a little bit more about this, um. And I, I have to go back because it's been a year since I looked at it, I think, um, in detail, so.
Well, maybe there's a leak, there's already been legal that we have to, you know, have maybe carry or somebody has to look at it and then we send. Or, you know, some sort of cover letter to the state saying, we have a right to change our.
Like I said, an ordinance, so, um, at some point, that's gonna involve legal counsel, things like.
Yeah, that would be involved in the ordinance process.
And I think even there, it, it will be your plan, not the state's plan, your plan.
Right.
So you can make whatever changes you want.
Right.
Because they're not going to mandate, they're just gonna say, oh, we like it. You know, you can ask us for money to help do it.
So our.
But, but figure picture, but figure picture length, I think you might have said it earlier, but doesn't the state really just care that we're making progress?
Exactly.
Yeah.
At, at the end of the day, right, that we're moving the needle.
So I'm trying to temp, so, so I'm trying to temper their, when, when I run into. State boys that like trade shows, I temper their expectations, like, hey, we want to make. We want to make small but noticeable incremental progress over time. We, we don't, we don't want to have this five-year. Curse of activity, everyone gets turned down, voted out and then. We're, you know, retired and then, then, then that just drops, that's it. Like that, that's, that's not success. Success for me is something that, um. Like Trent, Trent lived with for the rest of his career in Madison, like building upon this and then.
Well, I, I like the, I think Trent said it earlier, but something about, you know, pro, proactive prevention too. So we're starting to think, be a little more forward.
What we're trying to do.
Yeah.
Yeah. Use the carrot, not the stick.
Yeah.
Okay, um, all right, so, so, so we continue together. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, um.
Sorry, we asked something.
No, that's great. That's why we're here in person, because it's a better discussion.
So we'll move on, as I, the hundred thirteen, um, discuss to take action to prove special appropriation of a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars into the coastal resiliency account. As for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six capital improvement program pending board of finance.
Second.
And this was basically, uh, part of the plan and the budgeting process last year and it was approved on the C I P committee. And this is just taking the next step and actually doing transfer of funds. So this was kind of the.
So I just want to, I just want to say the same thing differently to make sure I understand it, um. The. The budget was approved as part of the overall town budget. It was part of the referendum vote. The funding isn't coming out of property tax dollars, the share is coming out of the undesignated fund balance. So yes, special appropriation, but it is not a surprise spend. It's not an extra budget. Spend, it was always in the budget.
It was planned.
Right, okay. People hear special appropriation and they think we've added to the budget outside of the referendum and that's not the case. This was included.
It was included in the capital.
Which is part of the budget process. Right, it's just the, the funding is not coming out of taxpayer dollars. Right, it's coming out of the undesig- so I just, this, this is not new.
Done this, the coastal resiliency. Yes, that established it, right, you've always done it this way, right? The regulation actually states, that's how we're gonna fund it every year. Right, so when we set this fund up and the benefit of this fund is it can actually generate additional interest income. Because it's especially allowed under the state, right? By setting it up, and we're using money in this one for that middle beach drainage project. So it's going to be of use and we can generate even more income because it's set up as the structure, so. Um, any further questions on that, Tom? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, uh, uh, I have number fourteen, discuss and take action to approve a special appropriation of seven like fifty thousand dollars into the major roads account. As for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six capital improvement program pending board of finance and town meeting will be involved.
So moved.
Second, okay, same thing here. This was, uh, discussed during the budgeting process. We also had a, a more robust discussion about more funding going into the works account. We'll, we'll, we'll continue that through this year's budgeting process. This is what we agreed last year that made the numbers work, right? In the, um, in the immediate rose account. So this is kind of needed to kind of continue to keep to our paving plan. It's a little bit of a jumpstart. Yeah. And we've done this also for. Um, and because of size appropriation, we have to go to town. So any further questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, John, I know you were here for the.
Well, you learned a lot, John.
All of you guys, we should.
All of us. Look at these agendas.
Yeah, then we got, it's, it's, it's harder to figure out when this works, but, um. Uh, all right, so I have number fifteen, so thank you. So, I have number fifteen is just the selecting meeting schedule. We went back and forth about changing our Tuesday meeting, uh, to a, uh. Wednesday and then evening and this and that, and I think we landed on the four o'clock Tuesday Zoom online meeting. That's worked, I know, because your schedule versus changed. Scott, I just, so we don't have to vote on this tonight. I want you to actually look at it because we kept going around. So here's your, your look and see if this works, uh, where you can make most of these and then we can vote on it.
This is like for the entire year?
Yeah, yeah, this is.
So what is it, what is the fourth that replaces?
Eight A M, remember, because that is a conflict for me for C C M. Uh, and we're gonna do Wednesday eight A M, but upwards of two says.
But four o'clock would be our remote.
Yeah, cool, this is the remote. So the one that's eight A M now goes to four. We thought it was better to have it. So.
Consider it blocked out.
So everybody's good with that, then we'll vote on this later, but just take a pass or look at the deets again. Um, and then the other thing is the, um, budget workshop, um, I want to highlight that, um, we're not taking action on this now. This will also be contingent on the board of finance, we'll have new members on it. Um, we are going to try to have the, we are having. The referendum now at the end of April, which was one of the goals when we read in the charter to allow for earlier referendum. Uh, dates, so, um, so now this kind of compresses things a little bit better, which I think is good. Because we did have some big gaps in between the different boards, the meetings. Um, and so check your calendars on these date and see if there's some problematic ones, um, you know. Um, and I think we're still planning on doing that, um. The workshops.
You get better tips with pizza that way.
Yeah. Well, so, um, you know, and then obviously I think we're gonna do the same thing this year where we'll ask board members to request what. Your, what, uh, departments come versus having everybody come at the time, because I think that, that got a little, uh, competitive, so. Uh, so take a look at this and then these will be voted on in. Yeah, we can file, so, so, um, it might be early December, so I think we gotta see what's fun. Okay, um, so now we can open up for citizens' comments. We no longer have any member of the public here. Um, and I don't think there's any hands raised.
No, there are no hands raised, no.
I think there's no objection, it was adjourned meeting, so thank you. All right, thank you guys.